Good evening and welcome to the November 2 Merimex School Board Meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is public participation, but there is no public here with us this evening, so we are going to move on. Just before we begin the rest of our agenda, I'd like to briefly just turn it over to Dr. Mark McLaughlin for an announcement.
So I'm sorry to let you all know that on Friday night, Matt Chevanel, as a result of the first storm of the season, was taking care of his driveway and suffered a pretty serious fall that resulted in a badly broken lower leg and ankle. And as a result of that, he is recovering tonight and won't be able to be with us. And so as a result, the agenda item that's there tonight won't be able to be addressed, but we will be able to be prepared to do that the next meeting.
And the agenda item that Dr. McLaughlin was referring to is 2019-2020 Budget Year in Review. So the next item on the agenda is the second review of the school volunteer policy, John Ferrozio.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we made, we had a few items to consider after our first reading. We added one place for a couple, just typographical area, we added an "or", and then we spelled out the FERPA and added that, and you'll see, we highlighted that in yellow. And we added out Family Education Rights and Privacy Act to the thing. And then finally, Board Member Rothaus asked a question if it was possible language about asking volunteers about pending criminal charges. As always, when we have questions that move our policy, you know, in additions to, we consult with our attorneys, and we did that, and we cannot add that language. However, we did add language to allow for superintendent to develop procedures for annual sign-offs, and that we ask whether we have any changes in last year for criminal status. So you'll see it's redlined on the bottom of the section that says School Volunteer Application Selection. It says the superintendent is authorized to develop additional procedures for selecting and approving volunteers. This is coupled with other pending requirements that we will have, and with some pending laws that will happen next year around adding some procedural steps and what we need to do that will accompany this policy, but we'll take care of that. And another addition that we made along this way was you'll see under Procedures for School Volunteers, I'm just going to read it because it's a little bit of a change of wording in how it reads. All school volunteers required to undergo a background investigation and a criminal records check prior to volunteering, we added. And then school volunteer means an individual who provides services to district without pay in any form of compensation included, but is not limited to the following. And then you'll, and that's right. So those are the additions and corrections we've made to the volunteer policy.
Okay, any questions? Any other comments? Okay, so that will move on to our third reading at our next meeting. The next one is the update on developing plan concerning remote learning impacts in school cancellations due to inclement weather. Dr. Mark McLaughlin and John Ferrozio.
So I'm going to turn this to John in a minute, but I just want to set the stage. So I think it was back on October 5th, we asked the board if it would like us to, you know, continue to investigate the idea of having, of using our capacities that we've gained through COVID to offset upcoming school days. And no school days due to inclement weather. And at the time, the board said that they'd like us to pursue that. And so John pulled a team together, and we don't have the complete plan to share with you tonight, but what John's going to do is provide just an update on the status, and then we'll anticipate for you when we'll have it for you. What I would just say is that particularly in the COVID year, in all years, it's a big question. If we have a lot of snow, then we bump up into deep into June, and that's been a challenge for years. This year, more than ever, when we're trying to maximize as much instructional time as we can, not just because it's the right thing to do for students, but also because we have to meet 990 instructional hours for middle and high school students and 945 for elementary, literally every day counts. And so it's in that spirit that we are trying to, you know, develop this plan that you'll see shortly. And so there might be a question as to, so if there's bad weather, like for instance, Friday, had there been school, it would have been a bit of a question. Until this gets presented to and approved by the board, if there's bad weather, then we'll just do what we always do, which is just call a day if we have to. But once the board is presented with this, with, you know, by maybe the next meeting in November or the very latest, the first meeting in December, and if the board approves it or some version of it, then at that point, then that would become in effect. So I just wanted you to know a little bit about where we're at in the meantime, so I'm going to turn to John because he's been leading that group. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. We met with, there's a representative from every level in almost every building. And it's more than just administrators. We've used special ed coordinators, librarians, and language arts coordinators to join our group. And we've tried to, and then we took a little broader brush and had some kind of ideas and thoughts that we've been presenting and asking educators themselves and teachers in the classroom about, so what do you think? And I'll put Nikki Rowe on the spot, that she happens to have a husband who's an educator in the district, and it was an easy one to say, hey, can you take this and go home and run it by Chris and see what he thinks of this? So we had that conversation, and we're trying to come up with a plan that is doable in a way, that's not asking too much of, because we can't control internet accessibility from people who are remotely and our educators who may not live locally, and trying to make sure that it's feasible, but flexible is what we're trying to do. So we have had two kind of iterations of a plan that had certain phases, a lot like a plan would be like, well, if there is internet and it's just a day where the snow is good, what can we do? If it's a day when there's really bad weather and there's no possibility of learning online, what's our option? And then the third option's always going to be what Mark mentioned. There will be days when we will have no school, and it's an impossibility to think that we won't have those days when there's no power, it's a nor'easter, it's a terrible day, we lived that in New England. And I think so, what you'll see to forecast when we come up is probably different options in a couple of, not just, not just one, we're calling it this, there's going to be calling it a couple things, and that's kind of what we have to do. And when you rename something, what's very important is communication and making sure our parents understand what the expectations of kids are and students are on those days. If we are going to have an online learning day, what does that look like? What's that, how do we get that communication out? So they're clear on it. It has to be very detailed, so there is no confusion. And we have a tight window to do that in because we already had our first snowstorm. And I think that that's what you'll, you'll see just a forecast a little bit for what we'll present to you either next meeting or the meeting after.
So what's going to happen next is that we're going to have a final review of these, this proposal with the leadership team, just so that it, you know, continues to vet, like, well, what about this? Have you thought of that? And that's going to be the reason that we're, we're going to meet with them one more time to iron out all those things. And then after that, then we'll have something to present to the board for its review. And certainly happy at that point to, you know, adjust as you see fit or what have you, but at that point, it will have been vetted, you know, multiple times by multiple groups, and then the last group would be the board. So I just wanted, we just wanted to put it on the agenda tonight to let you know that when we asked you on October 5th, we didn't sit on it. We're continuing to move on it, and within a couple of weeks, you'll, you'll see the plan. So happy to take any questions on that.
Andy.
So, thanks. So I had some questions going into this. I wasn't sure how far you were going to go, so I had some questions in my mind, and also a constituent reached out with a couple of questions that actually overlapped mine. So instead of posing it as a question, I'm going to feed it into the thought process of sort of what's here. So one of the questions that comes up is, you talked about different potential options. I mean, we're in this state now where, state, this circumstance now where there is hybrid learning, where there's two days in, two days out, there's remote learning. There's also the scenario that you've had when you've had a quarantine groups, cohorts of students, where there's been hybrid students but doing remote learning. Combine that with the idea of if it's inclement weather, is it just because it's slippery in the morning and we don't want to drive, but yet there's power everywhere? Is their power not there? And you talked about people. So I think there are, there are parents, and even what I've observed, what I've thought in myself is that if it is a situation where we know that we can do a cohort remotely that's supposed to be hybrid, we know that we were able to do that, we proved it in the middle school, and we've done some of that in the high school. There's an expectation that many parents have that if it's a snow day but there's power, that the district will be able to accommodate something similar so that they're not sacrificing instructional days. Right? Because the key, the fear piece that people have is we're going to have snow days, and every snow day is going to be that one, my student is supposed to be in school, but they're going to be out, so they're going to have one instructional day in the week and all that. So that's what you hear. So there's going to be a lot of questions about that, depending on what you come up with. The severity process and where you're going to draw the line between when you're going to call a school day versus when you're going to do something else is going to be really important to understand as well. Because you're going to be at 5:00 in the morning, put with a situation where the buses can't run, but you're going to have to make a decision that is sort of a variable, more granularity than you've had to in the past, right? So I think that the web that we've woven this year is flexibility, and I think there will be a high level of expectation that snow days will be there too, because people don't want to sort of go into June in this sort of scenario, the way it is right now. So anything that can be done to help mitigate that with flexibility and stuff while making sure they don't lose. I mean, the fear is also, we always talk about blizzard bags, that concept, those aren't instructional days for sure. Those are just get caught up. So there's a concern that losing instructional days is going to be the big thing. So I just wanted to share some of those thoughts. Don't expect an answer, but I'm sure that's been positioned and proposed to you as well. But it's sort of the pulse of what I'm hearing and what I was thinking as well, so.
Sorry, it's very helpful to hear it. I know that, I mean, want to just say a little bit.
Very, very similar in thought to where you are, and that's the game that we talked about. We talked about those days that, you know, and Mark and I had a discussion even this afternoon around, you know, those days that are just, you know, what about delay days? And really, we're in a strange place, and it's only really that only cohort that's coming in that day. The other ones that are remote or, remote or on an extent, that's their extension day. It doesn't affect them. It only affects the kids coming to school on that given day. So the question is, if we had another option of a, of an online option that day, maybe that's a better alternative than waiting and coming in. We can start school right away if we can remote right away, you know, versus trying to bring people in late. Those are one of the things, those are some of the things we're talking about and trying to come up with a, I get it conceptually. How do you articulate it and get it out there? And that's what we're kind of working on, right? Have agreement from our leadership team, then, and then, and then, you know, make some final decisions and then get the information out there so we all understand when Mark has that scale of day, that may be different. How does, how does that information become clear to our community? And they know exactly what we're calling and then exactly what the expectation of the student is that day. You know, and that's, that's the, that's the nuance that's a little more difficult and the team's working on with clarity of language.
So one question, just to follow on, one thing I've never been clear about is if you look strictly at the remote students that are there today, instructional days for the remote students, are the teachers remote as well, or could they be in the building? I mean, what I'm trying to figure out is, a student that's remote, will there be a situation where the teacher is not able to get to where they would teach from? Or is, is it in place that everybody's remote on both ends for those remote cohort of students?
Are you talking about in bad weather or the way it is now without, yeah?
A student who is remote full-time right now, is the instruction that they get given by a person that's onsite or remote some other location where the snow would or wouldn't affect them?
Both, both's the answer. Some, in some cases, like, I think we all know that, you know, a high school schedule has many nuances to it. And often, the person that's certified in that area was already teaching in the hybrid in the building, so they are now one of their sections.
So they're switching between remote and hybrid during the day?
One of their sections is remote from their classroom, they're broadcasting out.
Okay.
And that's just, and that's based on the nuances of a high school schedule, the myriad of certifications that we have. And we do have situations where at the elementary level, there is teachers who just choose, they just chose, they have better technology in the building and more access to the materials. They've chose to come in and they have spaces to do that. But we have others that can't because of their reasons, so they're remote because of that. You know, so it's a, it's kind of again a widespread with different things. We, we did a lot of things to make it kind of amenable to everybody that it would work, and we could certainly meet the needs of students, and we had to be very flexible in where people were.
Okay, good, thanks.
Can I just add one other thing to Andy's point? So, you know, John just touched on something really important. It's tricky to talk about, you know, whether you're going to have a full, call it a full, you know, day off or a delayed opening. And sometimes, you know, I mean, I, I don't think, I think if anything, you know, it's only been last year, but that, you know, I perhaps once or twice aired on the side of caution and didn't have school when it got nice later, and it's like, ah. But the reason that folks in my position sometimes feel a strain to, to call a delay rather than no school is because it counts towards your, you know, 180, if you're doing it that way, your instructional hours. And, and so the current system kind of sometimes causes you to, I think, to, to focus on, I'll get that day in, even if it might not seem like the safest thing. So I have tended not to worry about that and said, we're just going to do the safe thing, but I'm saying there is a tug, right? So what John just said is, if there is a day that the weather is not so horrible that it doesn't obviously suggest a close, but on the other hand is not good, and it might not get better, rather than dragging people out into the bad weather and making them come to school just so that it can technically count, but by the time, you know, you get your boots off and everything, I mean, what kind of an, so, so the advantage is that this, and this is one of the things that we've, that we've learned. You know, we've talked a little bit about some of the things that COVID has taught us, and it's not all been bad. One of the things that it's taught us is that, you know, we can do this and make a productive instructional day remotely. And, you know, as we said the last time, we're continuing to try to figure out ways to do it better and better. But the, the strange outcome of COVID has been that it's taught us how we can maybe maximize our time differently than we used to. So we don't have to just, just, you know, force people to slog through ice and whatever. Now, obviously, we're not going to just call it like that because it's more important to be in school. But I'm just trying to say that there are, like everything else, there are so many nuances and, and things that this just gives us a viable alternative that we didn't use to have. And so we've tried to say, well, it's the lessons we can learn, and let's do something about it, and this might be just one example. So, thanks. We'll have more for you in a couple of weeks.
Jenna.
I just had one comment that came to mind as we're having this conversation, as I've talked with educators from other districts. This is just an idea of, like, we're talking about communication for parents and just the idea of just making this whole thing work. I know other districts have this idea of a pivot day, and they've taken the, the time to, you know, teach their district what a pivot day is, you know, and us, for us, we call pivot day, snow day, whatever we call it. And then they've, they've made the plan and then taken a day to practice the plan as a district. You know, we're going to, today, we're going to, we're going to call a pivot day, and we're going to practice what it's like to do that. You know, I mean, you can almost make it fun, although it won't be fun because a reverse snow day is probably less fun than a snow day. You know, like, hey, you're not supposed to be in school, it's Friday flex day, but you know what we're going to do, a reverse snow day, and you're all going to practice? However, there is the idea that possibly we could take that idea and tweak it, make it our own in order to practice like a reverse snow day, and have the district on a day when there isn't any snow, practice the idea of what will we do if there's a snow day, here's how we're going to do it, we're going to practice it. It may not be perfect, but if we do it on a flex day, we don't, we can call it an extra instructional day and it, you know, not go perfectly and it not be a disaster. You know what I'm saying? So I'm, I'm just throwing literally the most unthought-through idea out there. But I think it has some merit when you're trying to experiment in this situation with, maybe we can make it fun and find a way to make it matter too.
Yeah, no, I, I think any idea is, you know, right now is really good. The, the thing that I'm thinking about when you're saying that is that, you know, one of the things that we're really mindful of is, so if, if our school schedules K to 12 are like a house of cards, you know, like you move one tiny thing and the, I know that our families, K to 12, their personal home schedules are fragile as well. And I don't, so I, I hear that completely, and the other thing to be mindful of is I don't want to create a situation where people are, that we're toying with people's very finely tuned schedules because I know that, you know, people are really working all the angles to get this to work. And so that, that would be the other thing that I would just want to be mindful of when you're talking about. But theoretically, it's a good idea because practice is better than no practice. What we've proven is that, you know, when things struck in March, you know, we, we didn't have the ability to practice much, and we just were able to kind of, you know, do it. And so I think that the good news is, I think we have some reason to be hopeful that we can be better, than we might have been before, but your point is very well taken.
Anything else? Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is the School Board Message to Administration concerning the 2021 and 2022 budget. I asked to have this on the, or I put this on the agenda rather so that we could take a moment to provide administration with some of our ideas and guidance as it relates to the upcoming budget season. Because here we are, it's the beginning of November, and we're about to go full speed ahead into that process. So I will go ahead and, I know Shannon has some ideas and comments, and I'll go ahead and start with her. And then if you just want to let me know if you have it, or if you want to pass, let me know that too, but I'll go ahead and start with Shannon.
Thank you, Cindy. I will give it to the, I'll read it into the testimony as I provided it to you in email for administration. So I said, "My budget message for administration is definitely different this year. When this message was written this time last year, we had never imagined being where we are today. I would say that the ability to deliver a strong education in a safe environment has taken on new meaning from our past conversations, and it should be the guiding principles to take this budget through its process. Things that are the same as prior years are the need for detail. What outcome will the expenditure support, and what is the consequence if it is not funded? What was wanted for but not asked for because we are not wanting to overburden the taxpayer? And what benefit would those expenditures bring to district operations? Will we eventually have to put, have no choice but to put those items in a future budget? When it comes to the heart of the budget, these are areas of concern from my perspective. One, infrastructure improvements, in parentheses, technology. Updating and upgrading the district's bandwidth and access to that bandwidth within all facilities is essential. We are in the midst of deploying some more student devices in addition to those students who have brought in their own devices. This demand will be maintained at a one-to-one level for all students and staff in the buildings going forward. Two, device procurement. We have brought forward technology, we have brought forward technology to get devices deployed that are nearing the end of their useful life. So we brought some out, we turned Windows devices into Chromebooks, et cetera. Having a device refresh plan to assure that we are not leaving students without technology access is a commitment we will need to maintain going forward. Three, facility maintenance slash upgrades. Maintaining and upgrading where needed facilities, where needed, facilities where we have a need to replace aging equipment and upgrade those that may not meet current performance standards. We saw considerable projects in recent budgets for equipment that in some cases dated back over 40 years. Four, curriculum supports. Continue in procuring those platforms that we will need to deliver both in-person and remote instruction, expecting that we'll be doing that in the future. Five, continuing and/or expanding programs we need to continue to ensure educational outcomes. Provide additional supports to maximize UDL, Universal Design for Learning, and SEL, Social and Emotional Learning Programming, in addition to the programs we are currently supporting in all core curriculum areas. And finally, safety. In all areas, including cleaning slash sanitation, cameras, upgrading old models, expanding coverage in the district where appropriate, and facility management for things like drainage, paving, et cetera. Though the budget is not designed to manage revenue, having information provided throughout the budget season in the areas of available funding, examples are E-Rate, CARES funding, et cetera, that the Merimex School District can access to avoid taxation to fund these initiatives is exceptionally important. As we keep the needs of the taxpayer in mind, it would be of value to know what funding we are pursuing to offset costs. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Andy?
So it looks like we've all written thoughts down and mailed them, so it's good to read these in because you're going to see some similar themes and some subtle differences, I think, from each of us, so this is going to be interesting to listen to. So my thoughts. It's difficult to understand exactly where we'll be for the 2122 school year, remote, hybrid, or fully returned to the classroom. However, I believe the district has to make sure it's prepared to handle whatever situation we may be in at that present, at that time. Much of the budgeting and planning has been undertaken during the, much of the budgeting planning that has been undertaken during the 2021 school year has been both reactive and flexible, given that the understanding of how to teach students and keep them safe is continually evolving. The challenge for 2122 budget process is to make sure that we focus on what is needed to achieve a teaching model that will likely forever include a remote aspect into the future. In that spirit, here are some of the focus areas that I see. First, look closely at the spending on things such as field trips and other expenses incurred for in-person instruction that involve going outside of the school grounds for educational purposes. What should we plan to retain? What should we plan to start backing away from? And are there areas we should try to increase? Next, look at the sports spending, and in particular, impacts to transportation and practices outside of the district grounds. What will be available? What should we change, et cetera? Do we reduce the breadth of sports we offer, and what would the financial impacts be based on the situation? Next, look at the staffing levels, both quantity and expertise, to make sure that the remote versus in-person selection of subject offerings is better aligned and consistent. Next, look at the technology required to allow more simultaneous remote in-class options for teachers where the class makes sense. This is a growing area and one we should look at investing in to help provide flexibility for teachers as well as give parents more confidence that a remote versus in-person choice won't impact the curriculum that the students might receive. Next, look at the quality of the air within the buildings and determine what level of spend there should be to help improve air quality where it's worse. If widespread, look at ways to start phasing in what we heard earlier from the Honeywell proposal or aspects, aspects of it, and plan for it over multiple budget years. And finally, delay items that aren't required, specifically some of the items that, that were warrant articles during the last election or two. Items like plan for the MHS complex, bleacher replacement, Brentwood aspects. Be realistic of the ones that are critical versus the ones we'd like to have, and make sure the board has a clear understanding. Overall, this year may show a spending, planning trend different than in the past. And if increases are needed in certain areas, make sure they're justified and qualified clearly so the taxpayers have complete clarity. If there are options to reduce spending, call them out, but not at the sacrifice of educational product we deliver to our students.
Lori, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Everyone said a lot, but I would say that I, I hope that our focus is going to be on our mission statement. The district understands the needs of our district at this time. We have evidence of those needs. And we understand more about the deficits and surpluses we have this year so we can look at areas that we think are critical to our students' needs going into the next year. And, and we know that there is going to be areas of, of great concern, such as like possibly 504s with the increase. possibly 504s with the increase of anxiety and depression, and looking at mental health. You know, I'm a strong supporter of, you know, all the district does with, you know, clubs and athletics. I think that that's a really important part of the social, emotional, and mental health first for kids. But I also know that as we're, we're building this budget, we're, we're going to have some critical needs that we didn't have in the past. And so I think that just needs our focus, needs the administration, you know, which they do every year, focus on our, our mission, and what are, what are our needs? And like Andy said, you know, what is the need versus the want? And can we push some things back to hit the things that we really need?
Thanks, Lori. Jenna, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do. So I did write mine out, but I did not know I should email it, so I will do that tonight. But I will read it into the record now. So this being my first budget, budget message, and being new to this process, I felt sure that I would agree with and echo the sentiments of my fellow board members tonight, and that has certainly been true. Actually, took kind of some of the words right out of my mouth, although maybe more specifically. However, as I thought through the values that were important to me as a parent and a community member at this particular time in our world, there's a few things that jumped immediately to my mind. Considering this pandemic and the unprecedented impact to public education, I think the budget will need to be flexible enough to be realistic, both in the perfect world scenario we're all hoping for next year, and also for what could be an extended COVID impact scenario that hopefully won't, but may very well be our reality. We need to be prepared to extend some of the safety, educational, and socio-emotional protocols and, and plans we have in place in order to plan properly for a worst-case scenario. In the event that we do resume full normal operations next year, district and administration and curriculum leaders need to anticipate the adjustments that we will inevitably need to ma, to make to address the significant educational impacts to all students. What we do know is that we cannot start our full, next full academic year, assuming that all kids are where they will need to be academically to move on as usual. And I, I know I don't need to tell you that. So we need to do the work now of recognizing and anticipating the depth of that deficit and create a budget that appropriately supports addressing those needs in multiple ways across all grade levels. As a result of my participation in just one meeting of the CIT committee, it is obvious to me that a critical investment that will continue to need to be made is various types of educational support technology, both for students and educators, a lot like Board Member Barnes had mentioned. We have out of necessity moved to new educational models and incorporated real-world technology into the educational lives of our students, and in the end, students and educators will benefit from that integration. We need to build on and strengthen this, albeit hastily assembled foundation, and move forward with the meaningful real-world technology integration that allows us to create learners who are prepared for the world beyond the Merrimack School District. One of the most important things I think we need to address, or we always need to prioritize, is an invested, investment in educational excellence, success, and outcomes for all students. I'm so proud to be part of a district which has a reputation for providing for the needs of students with educational needs. We do a great job with special education, and we have to continue that without question. However, we need to do an equally good job of meeting the needs of our gifted, advanced, and driven students, and also, and possibly more critically important at this time, is meeting the needs of the kids who don't clearly fall into either one of those categories. As a mom of a senior, I know many students for whom traditional school has been a real struggle, particularly in high school, not because of a lack of ability, but because of a different kind of ability. I know so many of these students, and they struggle to feel successful in school. Worse yet, they often begin to believe the issue is them, and sometimes it simply isn't. Traditional schooling is geared for a very particular kind of student, and honestly, that kind of student may not even be the majority population. Many, many of our students need greater opportunity to be involved in trade opportunities or other non-traditional educational paths to success. Now, I almost didn't include any of that in this statement because part of me wanted to say, well, it's a pandemic, let's just get through this, try to solve this issue now for later, once we're in a better place. But I think the reality is that every student right now is struggling in profound ways, and those kids that are more inclined to trade or alternative style of schooling than to traditional schooling are at more risk now than ever. I believe we have to begin the process of looking at how we can innovate, think creatively, and be strategic about building or tweaking programs that more extensively, or more extensively partnering with other districts, to allow more of these students to thrive educationally and not just survive school. It's crucial to our success as a district. We cannot fail these kids, or we'll see our dropout rate increase, and I feel like this pandemic is absolutely exacerbating that issue for kids. As a parent, I wanna end by saying thank you for always putting student needs and successes at the forefront of all your decisions where the budget is concerned. Now, as ever, we need to be, always make sure that these needs are being met while also balancing them with our responsibility to the taxpayers of Merrimack. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. And I have a few words myself, so my words are, I would like to see budgeting that supports our student and their learning as the highest priority. It should always be this way, but this is especially true this year. We must also provide the best quality of education while still being sensitive to the burden our taxpayers face, also especially in these challenging times. I'm expecting innovative and creative approaches to accomplish this school, especially in light of the current pandemic we are facing. I would like to see continued focus on budgeting that supports strategic planning, improving the educational product that we deliver, ongoing and remedial supports as a result of this pandemic, you know, basically because, you know, we will have remediation, you know, going on, you know, into the future. And so it's just not how we're dealing with this pandemic now, but how we are going to move forward to help bridge the gap of any deficits that might be occurring in some of our children. And also, we need to continue attention on the maintenance of our existing facilities. So with that, I mean, our CAP plan, we have a plan out there, which is to keep things going and on track, and so I would like to continue to keep that CAP going and on track. And we've been doing that over the last five to six years, and I think, you know, we've really been seeing, particularly in our technology area, if we hadn't done that, we would be in a much different situation than what we are right now this year if we had kicked that can. So I'd like to see that continuous focus on our CAP plan. I remain focused and concerned in items that are important to me, that continue to be important to me, such as the quality of our education, which I've mentioned before a couple times, the student and staff safety, communications, and of course, IT infrastructure. As a result of the pandemic, we need to ensure our IT infrastructure continues to receive a high priority in one-to-one devices should be considered. Also, we need to have infrastructure in place to support flexibility into the 2122 year. It's my hope that most of our students will be back next fall. However, if the pandemic is still active, there will certainly be many families that will continue to want their kids to have remote and homeschooling options. We need to provide support to these families and narrow any inequities such as course offerings or experience, such as specials in the elementary schools. These kids and families need to feel that they are an important part of the school community, and most importantly, ensure that they're able to thrive. In addition, I'd like to explore, continue to explore a couple of ideas or items. Options for improving student outcomes and graduation rates. Ensure that the inventory, that our textbooks are maintained, and we have an appropriate inventory, so that we don't have shortages of materials or other materials like workbooks. I'd like us to explore resources to track and manage things like mentor systems, and to create systems of mentoring. Increase or tutoring. Increase proactive after-school and weekend options for student support, especially during these next couple of years. I'd like administration to remain focused on the facts throughout this process, and I encourage as many details as possible and as much visibility into the budget regarding these budget expenditures and line items. So, you know, for example, please include breakouts and descriptions of expenses wherever possible. And then I'd like to thank district administration and district employees in advance for the work that you will all put into this important and valuable process. Thank you.
That's as all immensely helpful. I really appreciate it, and it's gonna be great guidance for us. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments? I think we saw some common themes, though, that came out of it, of these individual messages. So we'll let you go ahead and run with these, so I won't consolidate them. I think you heard what we've all said.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number six, which is approval of the October 5, 2020 School Board Minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the public minutes, and I'd like to add the non-public minutes to the next agenda. Do I have a motion? By Shannon, second? By Andy? Any comments? Any corrections? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Lori, did you?
No, no, I just, it just went off. I'm good.
Okay, all right. Oppose, none, abstain, one. The motion carries four zero one. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda by John Fabrissio.
Thank you. We have one nomination tonight, Anne Marie Morgan, part-time preschool teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. That is all.
A motion made by Andy?
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda, Ezrin.
Seconded by Lori. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero. All right, moving on to other, any correspondence? Lori?
So I have two. One is from Bill Boyd, who is town counselor. He called to just express concerns about families approaching him regarding teenage anxiety and depression. He wanted to know if we saw an increased need of 504 services, and what are some ways the school districts responding to the needs, which we had some presentations, but he was just asking those questions. The second correspondence, I talked about it a little bit last meeting, Jessica Yarlow from the Public Health. She is going to do the flu clinic at the Merrimack Public Library, but now she's willing to do it from two to four, which is better time for teachers. And she asked the question whether we would want the flu clinic at the library or in a van outside of one of the schools. And I know we'll, we'll just have to get back to her on that.
Okay, so regarding the flu clinic, so if I recall correctly, when we spoke last, we, I mean, at our last regular meeting, not our special meeting, we had talked about how we had notified our staff and had let them know we weren't having a flu clinic, and then you provided some information, and we were able to get that out to our staff. And do we know if any of our staff utilized those services? Do you know? Did we?
So the, the flu clinic, this one, the one at the public library, isn't until 11:30. So this would be for people that didn't get vaccinated. So some people have, if they go to get a physical, but if they haven't, this is, just gives them another place.
Okay. Is there, is there something that we would need to take a vote on? I'm trying to...
I don't know. I'm just giving information.
Okay. All right.
So can I just? So this, I think this really is nothing to do with administration, frankly. This has to do with what the board wants to, to authorize. I mean, we, we made it pretty clear back in a message on September 22nd that we weren't going to be sponsoring the flu clinic this year precisely because we were trying to avoid large gatherings. That was our effort. Certainly isn't a lack of concern for folks, it's actually out of concern for folks that we opted to do that. And so accompanying that message was a pamphlet that was put out by Melissa Gagny, the manager of special, of human resources, where she shared, you know, where you can get your flu shots, and it's fairly widely available. So I, I guess what I'm asking back is, is this something that, so we'll put this information out and say, you know, here's another alternative, you can go to that, but I just don't know if the board is directing us to actually house it, because that is not our plan, has not been our plan.
So I'm wondering if that person would coordinate, it sounds like that person would coordinate with the library, and if something was available that we...
They are in the library. They just wanted to know, they're in the library already, they're in the Merrimack Public Library. They just wanted to know if we wanted to have a van outside of one of the schools, or they want to keep it in the library. That was the question.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So it sounds like we would keep it in the library, and is that the one that we've already told our staff about?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, so we've already let them know about it. Okay, gotcha.
Right, she just asked a question this week, would we like to have more?
Got it. I was confused and thinking it might be an additional one. That's why it was...
No, this is the same one, it's just they gave better times for our teachers, two to four.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, any other correspondence? Andy?
I just had, as I mentioned earlier, I had a constituent reach out with questions and some concerns about the snow day topic, so obviously more details coming out on that.
Jenna?
So I had two emails. One was from an elementary parent highlighting the challenges for remote learning. I actually think we might have all gotten that one. I'm not sure, actually. And I got an email from a high school parent that was highlighting some challenges students are facing with hybrid learning, which I actually learned a lot from, so that was great.
Okay, great. Any other? I actually, I think we all received one from a parent concerned about the elementary education. I actually spoke with that parent. She did inform me, she did speak to her school principal that wanted us to be aware as well. Her concern was specifically around the specials that are being offered as it relates to one of our elementary schools, a very short, like, PE class of seven minutes, and concern about music and PE, and some of those compared to what students that are in hybrid are getting. So it sounds like the school has already made some attempts to try to bridge that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware, that's what I was asked to do. And we can continue to keep an eye on that and make sure that we continue to improve any of those inequities. And that's all I had for correspondence. Any comments? None? New business? I have a couple items, so there's two. Two items I wanted to give you a heads up on to be prepared for future agendas, and one of them, and I, and I heard many of you say, make the mention of strategy, strategic planning. What I'd like to do is coordinate a strategic planning session, something that we haven't done since I've been on the board, but something I know that we've talked about, and that's basically to do an off-site, it would be a public meeting, of course, to really align on what our vision is, what our mission is, what are the key items and strategies that we want to accomplish in more of a working session format than what we do typically when we're all up here like this. I'm thinking of sometime in January, the challenge would be to, for me to get a couple dates out to make sure that if we do it during the week, those of us that are working, if we can get those times off, or if we wanna do a Saturday or something along those lines, we may be able to do that as well, but more to come, and certainly feel free to provide me with, you know, any individual feedback you have as it relates to your own schedules. Secondly, and this is something I know it's been important in the past to Shannon, I've recently heard about it from Lori, and I think other school board members as time has gone on, and it's about the idea of creating a policy committee to be able to work through, you know, policies that we have that might be able to provide extra eyes and input to policies before we get them, but more specifically to be able to go through and ensure that all of our policies are up to date, and for those policies that haven't been reviewed in a long time, that we get a new, at least if we have no changes to it, we can agree to kind of re-stamp it, you know, with approval, and begin to work to get those up to date. And I think we can probably get some additional support besides just us and just administration, and be able to get input from other stakeholders that might be able to review it and, you know, provide some perspectives before we see them. So more to come on that. The next item, item number 10 is committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Jenna?
So I, we had the first meeting, this CIT committee, the first ever meeting, so that was fun, that I got to be part of the first ever meeting of something. I'm super excited to be on this committee at its inception and excited about the new direction as opposed to perk. It seems definitely that it's a critical improvement right now at this particular juncture, and just in keeping with the time. juncture and just in keeping with the times. Um, the initial meeting was focused on explanation of the focuses of the meeting and explain how and why the change from PERC and just, you know, the direction it's going and explaining what the purpose is and what all our roles are in that. And it was very informative. I think it will hugely benefit teachers and students because it's going to remove silos and move to fully integrate the curriculum needs with technology support and all of those things we were just talking about with budgeting and technology, I think are going to be dovetailing perfectly with that committee, which is awesome. One thing I wanted to say though, is that both Lori and I are supposed to be on that committee, and Lori did not get the communication about the initial meeting, so she just needs to be added into that. So I don't, I can emails, follow up with an email too, but I'm pretty sure Lori was supposed to be at that meeting, but she didn't know about it.
Yeah, PERC always had two seats, two full seats.
Yeah, if you could just look into that.
Can I just, um, when I presented, we have one seat because of, there's already, I mean, we can make any adaption there was, but when I presented, the, the, the documents had one seat on that, and that was the change of, um, um, that committee. It's pretty immense. It's a large committee, and that was just purely on, you know, I wanted to have an administrator from each building, I couldn't do it. I had to shut, I had to cut it down, one from each level and things like that. We had to make a lot of decisions on kind of who could be on if it's already a large meeting. But if that's the will of the board, um, I don't have a problem with it. I just didn't because the original, the documentation I shared with the board had one committee member on that.
I mean, I'd prefer to keep it with the two as it's previously been, but if someone else has any other ideas, let me know.
I don't think I'd be averse, but just, I think we'll all make sure that we're sharing the workload appropriately if, if, you know, that's creating more of a, a lighten, a lightning for one and a heaviness to the other.
Well, and it also, I think in the past, we didn't always have two show up, so it gave a little bit of flexibility if you knew that, you know, someone was going and you had a conflict or something that, I know when you and I were both on it, you know, sometimes if, you know, we would check and see.
I guess with an, if it was an alternate, would that be appropriate? Or would it?
Yeah, that'd be appropriate, yeah.
So maybe have a, a primary and an alternate in that way? Just figure out between the two of them, which one has a lighter workload and give them the primary and give the other the alt?
I'm, that works for me. I'm fine with that. Does that work for you Lori?
Sure. You know, I, um, I just, I'm just curious how you decided who was going to be on it? If we had two people from the board named.
I think Jenna was listed first.
That is.
Like, yeah.
Okay. Andy, thoughts?
On that? No.
Um, do we want to discuss? I mean, I don't know how, if you and Jenna want to work and see if you want to, who wants to be primary, who wants to be secondary, or do you want to, is that?
Do you want to do that now?
Or you, you can do it offline.
Gotcha, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. But no, not now. You don't have to do that. All right, so that's it. So we're down to.
Hold on.
I know you're, you're gesturing at me wildly, and I forgot, completes, feels like it's been a year since I went to the budget committee meeting. Yes, I also went to the budget committee meeting. I mentioned a lot of meetings this week, actually. Um, I, yes, I went to the budget committee meeting. Gosh, now, what happened at the budget committee? Oh, Naomi was named to the budget committee to fill the open seat and, um, what else happened? And, uh, oh, yes, and we did training. So for all that, for all the new budget committee members, there was training done by Pat, which was fantastic and super helpful. Actually, I was really glad I got to be there, um, and Andy wasn't able to make it. So, um, yeah, so Naomi's the new budget committee.
Okay. Any, oh, Andy?
I ju, I just want to add to that. So two takeaways from, from that meeting in the budget committee. First of all is that, um, originally it was indicated that the training for the new people was going to be on November 5th. However, it did take place last week. What was that, October? What's the date? Tuesday, actually. 27th. So if anybody wants to see the training, you know, watching from home, look for the budget committee recording that was done on the 27th and you can see the training. It's there. The other comment is the, the meeting on November 5th was, for the budget committee was supposed to happen this week that was going to contain Matt's update that he was going to give us tonight on the spending, and that meeting has been postponed till a later date. So anybody was, wanted to go to a budget committee meeting this week, there's no meeting at all. It'll be rescheduled for sometime, hopefully before Thanksgiving. We'll see how it works out. So it's sort of a tag team. She, she was able to cover for me last week on budget committee when I wasn't able to go, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Item number 11, which is public comments on agenda items. There's no public, um, still here. Um, and I'm just going to check with Shannon to see if we have any thing that's come in.
On last refresh, and as of now, there are, oops, no forms. And going back to the email box, make sure I am still up to date on that. And there are no emails.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Andy, seconded by Shannon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero. We'll go ahead and sign the manifest. Uh, thank you and good night.